Call the work session to order and stand for the flag slip.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will turn it over to Ron.
I'm already getting booed. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, over the last couple of weeks, it was requested that we kind of put together a work session to go over the recruitment process for the next city manager candidate. So, we dug through some stuff and got a PowerPoint here for you today of kind of what we came up with. Some of the objectives today, we'll review what we did last time, the past recruitment process, determine a strategy for the city manager recruitment process based on the three options, or if there's another option out there that somebody's thought of, develop a realistic schedule of what this is going to look like and how to move it forward. Also want to discuss like a future process for staff and council input into qualities and such, and I don't know that we would get into the qualities today, but more of a timeframe and how that looks, and a lot of it will be dependent on what option we go with. And then I've brought a current job description. You notice it hasn't been updated since 2010. I thought that was weird, and we've dug through the files and dug through the files and have found nothing other than that one. So, I'm assuming that that is the correct one. It's, put it this way, it's the only one that I have, so if there needs to be changes to that. And then last, we've got an agenda item for the October meeting to make a formal decision on this, so basically just consensus today and then formalize it, that way it's documented for the [inaudible]. We'll get started. Like I said, I should also say if there's staff here today too, that may or may not have input, and I'll let them decide if there's something there that they think that we haven't covered and whatnot, so I want to keep it kind of informal, good discussion, and basically brainstorming session on the way we think this should go and-
Bust in when you need to.
There you go. So, the past city manager recruitment, back in 2012, I think it was 2018, no, 2018, December of 2012, there was an informal request for proposals that went out for various recruiting firms. When I say informal, it was verbal. From the meeting minutes, John Hitt went out and contacted, I want to say, seven or eight different recruiting firms. They were received, reviewed, council consensus, or actually the council recommendation at that time after they'd gone through them was the Prothman company. Their contract, what it included was project review, you know, scope, salary, survey if needed, stakeholders, who do we want involved in the process. It included information gathering from, you know, from the stakeholders, from the city council, from city staff, I can remember that, you know, we had that informational session. They developed a position profile, basically what do we want, and that was kind of in their packet, you know, that's what was sent out to various advertising firms in various, you know, different cities, you know, we get these marketing things quite a bit. They did the advertising, they did the candidate screening, and then they also did the final interview process, is what they did. So, that's kind of a nutshell, and that's what I remember, and that's what we were able to dig up, and based on what you sent me and what we've got on record, that's, that was the process that was done.
And that's the one that, the fruit of that was Dana?
Correct.
Yes.
But in an essence, it was both Dana and Gary, yes, because they both interviewed-
Yes, I remember that, but I-
We went with the second, yes.
Initially, we went with Dana.
And Prothman had that guarantee, which theirs was a year more than everybody else's, it was three years-
Right, it's two years.
Two years, as opposed to one, and so the guarantee kicked in, and that was when we went-
Okay.
And then chose Gary at that time.
And so it didn't cost us any additional-
No.
Do we know, do we remember what it cost us to go through recruitment last year?
I don't, I know what it costs now. I don't remember the cost on that-
I thought it was in the $30,000 range, but $25 or something.
You're probably right, somewhere in there. I know we did get a quote from them to do this recruitment, just to see, they gave us a quote back for, I believe it was $18,500. Now, with that, there was a lot of add-ons, you know, if they do this, if they do that. So, I mean, reality is you're going to be in the $30,000 to $35,000 range, I would guess, if not more, for a recruiting firm, and that's going to be any recruiting firm, I think. I don't think there's one cheaper than the other. Now, I can't swear that because-
Right, but you're going to pay for it-
Absolutely.
But you're-
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, that was kind of, that was kind of the past, that's what we've done in the past. And based on that, we kind of looked through, it's like, alright, so what are our options here at this point, you know, what's a good direction to go? And I basically have came up with a list of three options. Option one would be to complete the process with city staff. So, you have your new HR director who will be on board on the 30th of this month. She seems well versed in recruitment, could do this. So, we would do the application packet, all the advertising, you'd do like, just off the top of my head, we'd do an initial screening of all applications that we saw, and that would be comprised of probably a couple of staff and a couple council members and maybe the mayor that do the initial screen on that, similar to what we would do if we were hiring internally. Our HR director does most of the screening based on qualifications, and then the department director and maybe even the supervisor look at all the applications and go, well, let's look at this one as well. So, there's those options.
Has she done anything at this level?
I don't have, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
So, I don't know the answer to that. I, yeah, I, that would be something we'd have to ask her, how to do that. And then from there, you know, we develop a formal interview process, what that looks like, you know, I mean, that's obviously going to be compromised of staff, it's going to be the council and the mayor, it's going to be community folks, and what that looks like, we would have to, we'd have to probably sit down and kind of brainstorm how we want that to look, where we want it to be, and how to move that forward. So, that's, that's kind of a bad option. It's loud.
Yeah.
So, with it, I kind of, I put some pros and cons of both, you know, the pros of this option is probably the least costly option, other than staff time, but your staff time's budgeted for. We have recruitment experience, do we have this level of recruitment experience? It would depend on what our HR director has, you know, in those terms. We could figure it out, but might have to muddle through that a little bit. Staff, council, ownership of the process, you know, we're working through the entire process ourselves, so that's important. Now, some of the cons to that, you know, pretty busy right now, you know, we're limited on staff, so it wouldn't just be your HR director that's doing this, it's going to require involvement from multiple staff people to make this all come together, so that's something to keep in mind with this option. And then I've got, you know, research, what markets do we target, what, you know, I don't have familiarity of that, maybe our HR director would, so we would have to dig into that a little bit too, if we did it. And then, of course, you've got council and staff time for vetting this process. I'm not sure that that's a con, the more that I think about it, I think we're probably going to spend some serious amount of time with council and staff vetting the candidates as they come in anyway, so that's kind of a here nor there. So, that's option one. Option two would be to direct hire the Prothman firm. Looks like I'm behind, I'm reading off my paper. So, Prothman completes the entire service, or we can scope their service to be tailored however we want it to fit, you know, million one ways to do that, I mean, do you want them to do this piece, and we'll do that piece, I mean, there's all kinds of things, there's all kinds of ways to do that. So, that's an option. Our contract code allows us to do this, our revised contract code, we can do direct negotiations on a personal services contract up to $75,000, so that's, that's that. We would need to do a budget amendment for this, obviously it's not budgeted anyway. And kind of pros and cons about that, you know, you've got the entire process completed by Prothman, or, you know, city council staff input, we can tailor the contract however we want to see it. I think regardless of how it's tailored, there's going to be a substantial amount of input from council and staff on how this looks. So, they've also got the experience, they have the contacts, they know who to target, what markets to target, so I guess in essence, they're not reinventing the wheel. Cost, got likely to be over $35,000 by the time we get all the way through the process. And even so, there's probably less involvement from us, even in a tailored contract, if you did it that way, just you're not, when it's not a day-to-day thing that you're working on it, you sometimes miss some of the details, so there's that to look at as well.
One of the things, I thought I remembered having conversations with them about things that were common in a contract, you know, God knows, we've heard a lot of that in the most recent days, but, and that they said, well, this is very typical for a contract for a city manager, yet this is very typical, it's usually kind of, you know, so they, they see a lot of contracts going into before a council accepts them, and I felt like we relied heavily on them to say, yeah.
And what I would like to do this year, or this time, is to, if we use, even if we use a firm, is to rely more on the League of Organ Cities, and look at what some of their contracts are, and get some recommendations from them, because they're very helpful on that area, and I think that would be a better, I agree, I felt that the contract was, it was like a more of a secondary thought to them, and it was just kind of, well, this is just it, and just, this is the contract.
Yeah.
So, I would feel better if we did some-
Needs to really be gone through.
Did some research on it and-
If we accept some, you know, yeah, I want to know, but we have to.
And the good thing is our city attorney has been through this process just recently, so we, we're familiar with the contract, and I think that would be a good thing for him to go through too, and we can, I think we can tailor it to what we want, as opposed to, but I think the biggest thing is, is looking at the League of Organ Cities and looking at other contracts too, and not just-
Yeah, we need, we need to know what else is out there, yeah.
Have you done a preliminary discussion with them about options?
I have not, I did not talk to Prothman. I wanted to wait to see what counsel wanted to do.
Or League of Organ Cities, is that what you mean?
Oh, League of Organ Cities, no, but I know that they will, they have that information, so I haven't, I haven't checked yet.
Yeah, they would do that, and that's a piece that, so even if it's Prothman or whoever it is, you can take the contract piece out of their contract, and not have them develop the contract. We could, as a group, develop the contract, and then have it reviewed by whoever, so that's an option. I mean, again, you can tailor these things any way we want to tailor them.
Does the League of Cities have an option like Prothman?
They do not, there's not a service like that, no. Now, in fact, Prothman, I think, is one of their recommended people, or one of their sponsors, or something like that, I'm not exactly sure, but I know they work with them quite a bit.
Okay. So, moving on, option three is basically the same thing, other than you do an RFP for firms that do this, and there's multiple firms that do this, and recruitment firm X completes your recruitment process. Again, contract can be tailored however you want it to be, and our code, again, allows us to direct negotiate up to 75K. In this case, it would be irrelevant because you're doing an RFP, and you can go up even higher than that, so, with council approval. And kind of the same pros and cons to that, other than the fact that there would be more time worked by staff to manage an RFP, to do that, and that process. You've got the advertising costs, and you're definitely going to be over $35,000 in that, but everything else kind of plays out the same. So, those are kind of the options, with that, I mean, or do we see any other options? I mean, this was off of my little brain, not, so, and I'm not a recruiter by any means. So, if you can think of anything else that you'd like to see, and like to discuss, I mean-
In going through this once before, I liked the Prothman group, I liked the way that the process went. The, one thing I would like is, I would, I really liked their ability to tap into people that we would have no clue how to get a hold of, and that's, there was some hiring that we did, and I cannot remember what it was, and I wanted to think it was a city manager the first time, but I can't remember, but I remember that we had done, like, an internal where we were doing it, and we put out the advertising, and we got nothing. And then somehow we switched over, and we went to Prothman, and then we got a whole bunch, and I'm almost thinking that happened before we did this one, the city manager, does that sound familiar?
I have a vague recollection that you're right.
We put it out, and there was like three or four candidates, it was just awful. And then we went to Prothman, and we came back with, I think, like, eight or seven or eight, and really good qualified candidates, and that was, that was the advantage that I liked about it, is that they have contacts and really good promotion. And they also followed through with a lot of stuff, which was really nice, where they came down, they did interviews with us, got what we wanted, made sure the brochure was done, they worked, I thought they worked well with us, and it is a cost, but it's kind of an area of expertise that's a real specialty, especially at this level, I think. So, I kind of like hiring Prothman and not doing an RFP, because we've had experience with them. They just did the fire department, did a really good job with them, I don't know if you've seen their process, but they did a pretty good process with them. But I would like to do that, but maybe tailor it to pull in maybe some of the things that we want to do here, and contract would be one of them, absolutely. But, you know, I don't know exactly, we'd have to look at what all their services are, but I, to me, that, it feels the best. Not that we couldn't do it internally, and not that-
I would be worried internally, bringing on a brand-new HR director, and regardless of the level of experience of recruiting at this kind of level, we don't know, maybe, maybe she knows how to tap into those, but, but for your first six months on the job, you don't know the people, I want to say something snotty and rude, and I'm going to not do that, because I'm trying to be a nice lady now. No, but, but you're, you don't know the culture, you know, you're new, you're just, you're kind of just feeling your way, getting to know your job, getting to know everything, that's a, that's a weird time to hire your boss.
Yeah.
I don't want to do it internally, I don't think that, I think that's just going to stretch staff, it's going to stretch the entire process out even further, and plus, as you pointed out, a brand-new person walking in, trying to get their, everything around them, and then having to tackle, I mean, a huge project.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not setting somebody up for success, so.
Yeah, and if we hired a firm like this, whether it's Prothman or whoever it is, then Ron and the staff can concentrate on doing the things that they're doing, which is, you know, everybody's got double on their plate right now.
Well, it feels like Ron's doing a really good job, and we're saving money, so I don't, I don't feel like we're in a hurry.
Just leave it.[1156.13][1156.13](laughing). Yeah, I don't think Ron would agree.
There will come a point, where I may jump off a city helm.
Oh.
We don't want that.
All right.
No, there's, there's ways, I was just kind of looking through their, what their proposal was here, and there's, there's things that we could do to tailor that, you know, I mean, we want to make sure we're doing the contract, what else would, would we-
The, they kind of organized the meet and greets, but we also had a big part of that too, so I don't know how much they play into that, or if that's a big cost, but that's something that we could do, because I know we've been through a couple of those, and we just did the fire department when I went too, so I kind of familiar with that, I think the meet and greet kind of stuff we could do and coordinate if that's a big piece of the, of the part.
Yeah, and I've just got to lump sum, so I don't, to be honest with you, Paul, I don't understand how it's broken out or anything.
Okay.
I think it's basically, it's really what it is, based on time, you know, there's-
Yeah, that, right. But I'm thinking if, you know, we save eight hours, 10 hours of them coming down and doing the meet and greet or something, that might be a-
Yeah, I mean, I know they put all the, the interview process together, they helped develop questions, I was looking through some of that old material, and there was things that, oh gosh, there was all kinds of different little spreadsheets that they put out, you know, what qualities you want to see, and, you know, I would assume that we would want them to build the profile that we would send out, and that type of stuff, okay. I think we got a pretty good idea.
They had talked to all of us too, they had interviewed all the council, I think they interviewed staff, I believe.
They did.
And I think it was a pretty good thing, and I really liked the, the public input too, the meet and greets and those things where people can get a feel, and then when we go into the interviews, we've actually got some feel for what the community kind of feels too.
Well, maybe what the best approach to this is, is, you know, come back in the October meeting and, and, well, let's, let's move through the rest of the PowerPoint, and then, then we can kind of, you guys can kind of give me a consensus on how you want to move that forward. I think kind of one of the, the keys on this is, is schedule, what, what's a realistic schedule?
Well, the, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no bad.
I was, I was going to say, one of the things we talked about, as I remember last time, and I think this might have been part of the thing when, when staff did it, it was before, like, the holidays, it was like October, November, and we got nothing, we got two or three, and I think that might have been when the staff actually handled recruitment, but then I remembered when we went to, I believe this one was done in February, I believe it was, and we got, I think it was eight or nine original, and I think they even had more, that was what they filtered out. So, I just think this time of year, like, if for us to rush right now and try and do it in December, I think it's a really bad time. So, I, I'm kind of thinking early in the year, January, February.
And I know that's the consensus of staff as well, that-
Okay.
Let's not rush through this process, and, and make it to-
They're shaking their heads.
They are, yeah. They'll get over it, they'll, they'll be fine.
So, you guys will have this done by October, right?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're looking at 10 to 14 weeks anyway on a recruiting timeline, and a couple of things that we've talked about internally is, you know, we're, we're going to be knee-deep in our budget by then, do you bring somebody in the middle of that? And keep in mind, anything you do, really, at this point, your, your budget amendment, so keep that in mind, that we'll have to likely do contingency transfer for those pieces.
I think you could make that case, though, for almost anything, but maybe, maybe it's an ideal time for them to come on, I mean, are you, are you making the case for not bringing them on during the budgeting?
I think, I think it would be complex to try and get your budget built with us, and try and bring somebody up to speed on our budget-
While you're trying to budget, and you've got somebody-
Yeah, I think it's a little bit more, it would probably flow a lot better if they were coming in on the very tail end of it and weren't really a part of it, or either were involved in the entire thing, because it gets very complex on, you know, well, what's this, what's that, and to have to do that over and over.
That puts us like in April, bringing somebody on, kind of, you're done most of the process by then.
Yeah, April-ish, May-ish, yeah, somewhere there.
That seems pretty reasonable.
But that's, that's obviously your guys' decision, I'm just telling you, we're, we're looking at it, and it might be complex to, to do that with, with bringing somebody in that, that piece.
Well, it seems to me that if you guys are the ones that are getting affected by it the most, and that's your opinion, then I certainly respect your guys' opinion and the workload that you're doing.
And it's not to say that it can't happen, I mean, there's, there's no reason that you couldn't start January 1, and, you know, run your 10 to 14 weeks and have somebody into that process, we're not that deep into it, then that just assumes that everything goes, and then, once you've done your recruitment, then they've got to get here, so it's-
If you're looking at May anyway.
Right. So, you're, you know, if you started the process, if you had everything ready to go, I know in talking with the fire department, how they use Prothman, they started their process, I want to say in February, if that's right? And, but they kind of drug it out based on-
They were slow, yeah, yeah.
They, they did it based on retirement dates and stuff like that. So, you can tailor that as well, however you want, and go that route, so, am I hearing, like, after the first year, starting after the first year? Okay. You want to get a contract, I mean, we could, we could get a contract in place prior to that, and start doing, I think, between now and then, we could do a lot of legwork that needs to be done, but not necessarily the advertising piece of it.
Yes.
I think it would be also a good idea to get the job description looked at from, is it CIS that does that, or is it-
The job description?
LGPI.
LGPI, I get, the three of them could be.
I do too.
Are they still good enough?
And I'm on the board.
Yeah, they do all of our job descriptions.
It would be nice if we could have them look at this in the meantime while we're looking at things-
Get some updates.
And have them do some updates, yeah.
Sure, and that's why I handed one out, if anybody sees something that-
Because it does look outdated, but-
That they want to do different. Okay. So, in moving on with this, so with that, I think this, this slide becomes, I mean, I'm hearing the consensus that we kind of want to move towards the Prothman direction, which is likely the proposal that we'll bring back for you guys to make a formal motion on. With that, we would just include these, you know, the future dates, similar to what was done last time, where we're talking to Prothman, you're talking to Prothman, and we're getting the, you know, what desired qualities, what do we want to see on that point? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And I, I think it'd be nice to have, if we're going to look at Prothman, to look at them, and then look at what they're offering, and then maybe coming up with a couple other options that we have, that we could tailor out this item or that item, and-
I can do that, yeah.
And what you guys could handle, and that, that's something that staff would have to determine-
Yeah.
If you can handle this part of it or that part of it.
And all, Debbie and I will, will look at, you know, just kind of throwing some stuff out, like, what if we did this, and you guys didn't do it, and that type of stuff.
I would be comfortable having a, instead of all of that, having to come back here, like, if we had a committee of you and maybe another counselor, and kind of, kind of looking at that, and then coming back and saying, here's what we recommend, we've already looked at this, we, you know, we don't have to have, I don't think, that, you know, picking apart and deciding kind of which pieces we think, and which, which pieces the staff, if the staff wanted to meet with a committee and then present us, and I'm obviously just speaking for me, but I'd be comfortable with that.
I'd actually love to work with whomever.
Okay.
One thing that's also really important to me, and I don't know where this happens in this process, but a lot is expected of our directors, and it felt like some things were being passed down to our directors that probably shouldn't have, and I'd like to see that the directors get to have some input, like, these were things that we shouldn't have been going to, and this really should be the city manager function, yes, there's always an emergency, that kind of thing, I get that, but-
That's a good point.
Just to make sure that it's not just regular, that there's more even being put on our directors to have to do things that really is a responsible, excuse me, the responsibility of a city manager, and I just want to make sure that piece doesn't get missed, and I don't know why that-
That's what this, this is all about.
Okay.
That's exactly what that's all about. Is it time for everybody to come together and basically determine those qualities, say, what, what do we want to see different, what needs to be different, and kind of go that route.
Yeah. As long as, I agree, as long as the, everyone pretty much is here, or all of the department directors have good input and don't feel like they can't bring to the table those kinds of things.
No, I don't think, I don't think any of them do feel like that, I mean, based on my discussions with them, I think everybody'd be pretty open to what, what's going on there. We have a pretty good team, that'll, that'll be honest. So, with that, you've got the current job description in front of you. So, I'm hearing probably LGPI for, for an increase, but, or an increase, a review of that, and we can send that off to them. They typically would grade it- They typically would grade it for us, say, "Oh, wow, yeah, this is a grade X." So, I'm not, I want to see what they can do. In the meantime, I would recommend that if any of you have changes that you want to see into this, there's something that, that needs to be deleted or added, that we have that opportunity to... And then that's another area that Prothman would come in and work with as well.
Yeah, in their documentation, and I know when I look back at their old flyer that they did back in 2012, I think it was, 13, they had a more of a, they took this and made it into more plain language, and it seemed like that would be the area where we can address that kind of a thing. You know, a manager that is this way, or a manager that does that, and those types of things.
Okay. We did, we have done a recent salary survey, that was done in May of 2018. It includes, I can't remember how many different cities were on there, and the different city manager, it had their tenure, experience, I think it might even had education, all this stuff, and what they were getting paid, and different benefits and whatnot. So, we do have that, so I'm not sure, I think from May of 2018, I'm not sure that we would need to have Prothman do another one of those. I think there would probably be some decisions need to be made by this body about what that salary package looks like, but that can be at a future date when we get to that point. But just know that we do have data collected on multiple cities that we could use.
Was that done through LGPI?
Uh, no, I believe we did that internally. Debbie did that, and I don't know why that was done. I just know we have it, so...
That might have been done for the Equal Pay Act.
Ah, could have been, yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, could have been. So, I think that's it that we have, are there any questions?
Do we know who else is without a city manager and maybe recruiting as well at this time?
I looked the other day on League of Oregon Cities, was just thumbing through their stuff, and there were, I want to say there were four or five cities in Oregon that we're looking, if I remember right. So, it seemed like they were smaller than us, most of them. There might have been one big one, but most of them were smaller.
Just was curious.
Yeah. Okay.
Do you have good direction from us, or?
I think so, I think what we'll do is, and tell me if I'm wrong, I think we'll bring a proposal back next time, basically using Prothman. The one question I do have is if we're going to use a committee, council committee, or, you know, several from council, Karen, Paul, how soon do we want to get together to kind of tailor the contract? I don't necessarily know that we would need to do that, I think we could tailor that, I think we can make the decision to move that way, since we're not, we've got some time. So, we could just formalize the decision to use Prothman and move that forward at the next city council meeting, so that it's documented that way. And then from there, we could dig into the contract with him, and I can touch base with him and let him know that we're intending to do that.
Yeah, the contract part is not a rush, that's something that we have a lot of time to do, because that doesn't, that's not going to be an issue until May or April, or whenever we even start the actual process of hiring, so...
Yeah. No, that piece, I'm talking about Prothman's contract.
Oh, Prothman, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so we could let him know that we're, we're going to likely be using them and figure out how we want to tailor it from there. One of the things we could probably do to make it happen that way is do a conference call, rather than bring them here, just spend an hour of his time and say, "Hey, you know, we want to, these are the things we're looking at." And then that could be brought back to the city council, their contract at some point for approval, to move it forward that way, if you choose to do it that way.
Yeah, and I think if we're going to do a committee, that we probably should meet before that next meeting.
Correct.
I would also like to help with that committee.
Okay. Two of you, and me? And then, you get a couple of staff?
I will.
Okay.
I'll figure out somebody, I'll rock, paper, scissor them and tell them who's coming.
Okay.
Okay, so from us, next time, you will see a proposal that you can vote on formally, that basically at the October meeting, it's on the agenda, that basically says this is the direction we're headed, and that way it's documented that way.
Great.
And in the meantime, I'll try and set something up with you and you guys to get committees started, and find some dates that work for everybody and get it going.
Sounds good.
Okay, any other questions?
Any more heckles?
Any more heckles?
From the peanut gallery?
Okay.
Not from me, because I'm a nice lady.
Yeah, Ashley?
Are you trying to start practicing before you become a grandmother, is that why?
No, I got trouble for not being nice to-
So, is the job description going out right away?
Is it going out?
To get reviewed by LGPI?
No, I don't think so. I think we need to make changes to it, and council needs to make changes to it before we can even have it done by LGPI.
Okay.
I just didn't want to, the wording in the job description limits certain other executives that may be qualified to run the business of the city of Lebanon, but may not be on paper as it is in this job description.
What in particular are you mentioning?
So, everything that, if Prothman rates applications that come in, they're going to be rated based off the job description, and the qualifications met in those job descriptions. So, we may not see, especially since they're reviewing the jobs, or the applications that come in, we may not see really talented people that could do a great job for us, because maybe they haven't been a city manager, or maybe they're in a, they work in another industry.
But you know, Prothman actually did a good job on that last time. The city manager, what?
At the military.
The gentleman that's the city manager for Albany came, he had absolutely no city experience, he was coastguard, and he had all military experience, and actually turned out to be a really good candidate, once he got some experience at a smaller city and did an assistant gig there. So, they did do that, and I, that's a really good point, though, because they may not check off the boxes, but I think that's one of the good things about this organization, is they'll look at experience, and that he had the experience to do it, but not necessarily the listed experience.
Well, I think, I'm sorry. Well, I was just going to say, that's a, I know exactly what he's saying, because a lot of times, in past practice, we have the same thing, where we check off the box, but we like to see all the applications, because there may be, there may be a shining star in the pack that didn't have this or scored low.
Sure.
So, that would be one place where this committee could basically vet all applications, along with Prothman, and-
That's a, that's a good idea, yeah.
I think that's what Jason's getting, am I correct on that?
Yeah, you know, last time, the last few recruitments we've done, kind of been the same, it's like a circuit that they're interviewing at, this five guys knew each other from different interviews they'd already been to. So, it would be nice to try to throw something else in there as well.
Sure.
Yeah, I like the idea-
It's a good idea of looking at all of them, and-
Looking at all of them.
Them just not saying, "Well, we don't like these ones."
And that can be another place where we can, we can tailor our contract. I know they do those screenings and the pre-screenings, but that doesn't mean that we can't get those applications as well and do the same thing, and say, "Hey, you know what, we want to take these, this one further in the process."
Thanks, Jason.
Yeah. Okay. Will?
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Any other questions? All right, we got our committee, Michelle, Karen, and myself, and a couple of staff members, and yourself.
You can be more nimble with fewer people and not having to wait for another council meeting.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, and we can, we can bring all those recommendations, all that stuff will come through here for a vote anyway.
Right, for finals, yeah, perfect.
Because I noticed some of the stuff on the last time Kim and I were going through, we didn't, it's hard to go back and find history when it wasn't, wasn't voted on.
Yeah.
And so, it just makes it really difficult to, if we can, if we can formalize it, it just makes it easier for the future.
Okay, good, that, for Karen, thank you.